Welcome everyone. For those of you that may not know, my name is Jeff Whelan. I'm chairman of the Board of Commissioners for Lycoming County. And again, I welcome you. I would like to thank Dr. Gilmore and the staff at Penn College for allowing us to use their facilities. I think these are great facilities to host something like this. And so again, I'd like to thank Dr. Gilmore and her staff at Penn College. I would also like to thank my own staff, primarily in the planning department of Lycoming County. And you'll be hearing from at least two of them. John LeVoe and of course Fran DeJonge, who's going to be offering a PowerPoint presentation. I will tell you that Lycoming County tends to be on the forefront of a lot of issues, some good, some that may qualify as not so good, as we're about ready to hear. But it was our staff at Lycoming County that brought this to our attention. Commissioners immediately when they realized the consequences, we rapidly took that to our state association, which is the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. And then of course, I also sit at the national level with the National Association of Counties. And I can tell you that I'm sure we're not the first county, but we're one of the first counties that got our state and federal associations in high gear over this issue. So again, I want to thank the staff at Lycoming County for bringing it to our attention. And I guess that's why we're here today. I would also like to thank the members of the Planning Commission. Once we get started, they'll be introducing themselves. So this hearing today is being conducted by the Lycoming County Planning Commission. And it was done at the request of the Lycoming County Commissioners. The purpose of this is to collect information from you, the public, on how the new rates are going to affect you. We're not here to answer questions because quite honestly, it's above our pay grade. But we are here, and what I'm most interested in, is the solutions to this issue. We're obviously here to help clarify it, and you're going to see how we got to where we're at with this PowerPoint presentation that Fran is going to walk us through. As luck would have it, this all occurred just about the same time that we're ready to launch a county-wide reassessment. So we're kind of interested to see what effect that's going to have. And again, we'll be looking forward to the testimony that's going to be presented and you know, input from the public. And obviously, we're also, you know, we're building a record here. We're going to compile this information that we gathered today and for future use. I do want to comment on our congressman that represents Lycoming County, Congressman Moreno. Tom has been extremely helpful. There, you know, I do want to tell you that there was over 405 representatives that voted to take the federal government out of subsidizing this, if I can use that word loosely, subsidizing the whole insurance program. But I will tell you Congressman Moreno has been very cooperative, very anxious to gain as much information as he possibly can on this. He's been in our offices twice this past week. And he had a staff person put together some information, if I could just take a moment and read it to you. Congressman Moreno is in Washington today, working hard to represent us, and therefore is unable to attend in person. Among those, or among these responsibilities in DC, he is attempting along with many colleagues to address the sudden issue in flood insurance premiums, especially in working middle-class communities, through additional legislation. While the congressman acknowledges that homeowners in flood-prone areas should have to pay their share in premiums to reduce the burdens on the average taxpayer, he supported the reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program, which is NFIP, and several reforms to make it more financially sound. However, neither he nor the other 405 members of Congress that voted in favor could surmise the increases and impact that this legislation has had on our local communities. I believe another word for that is unintended consequences. To date, the congressman has cosponsored two bipartisan bills that address these burdensome increases. And you might want to make a note of this for those that have a pencil in their hand. It would be the House of Representatives Bill 2199. That was introduced by Representative Richmond out of Louisiana. And also HR 3370. And that was introduced by Representative Grine from New York. Each of these seek some form of delays, adjustments, and obviously transparency behind the actuarial and mapping processes used by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The congressman continues to diligently work with friends on both sides of the law to craft a solution that is fair and equitable to everyone. Those who purchase flood insurance and the taxpayers that have subsidized these programs over time. Representative Moreno is confident that one of these proposed bills will be brought to the floor of the House of Representatives in the new year. Additionally, the congressman has been gracious enough to provide a member of his staff, Mr. Matt Hutchison, Matt, where are you at? There's Matt over there, to observe these hearings on this issue. And I talked to Matt, and he's about as anxious as I am to find out what some of the solutions are. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Mike Wiley. He is the solicitor of the Planning Commission. Mike will read the rules of conduct, the rules of this hearing, which I believe everyone should have gotten a copy out there. And with that, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you. We just have some rules that we're setting forth for these proceedings today to kind of help us get through your questions and information in a way that we can hear from as many of you as is possible. There was a handout with the rules as you came in. We are going to modify a couple of them, given the nature of the proceedings here today. But any person who wishes to speak must sign in. There were sign-in sheets when you came into the auditorium. Speakers will be called upon in the order of the sign-in. Comments should be addressed to the chairperson here, Mr. Logue, and no others. Speakers shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Individual time may be modified by the chairperson. Speakers may not yield their unused time. Speakers must speak from designated locations. And once the presentations are over, they're going to be bringing microphones down at the end of the aisle. If for some reason you have difficulty getting to the microphone, we'll certainly attempt to accommodate you so we can hear your comments. Speakers must identify themselves by name, address, and municipality prior to speaking. The floor will be opened up to others who have not signed in, only after those who did have spoken. Those are the rules that we'll use for the public comment phase of this hearing today. And thank you in advance for working with us in that regard.
Thank you, Mike. My name's Herman Logue. I'm the chairman of the Lycoming County Planning Commission, and welcome to these hearings this evening. I reside in Gambell Township. And I want to introduce our other members, introduce themselves, and state of municipality if they're residing, if we can start with Cindy, please.
Cindy Bauer, Gambell Township.
Howard Frye, Cogan House Township.
Carl Nolan, Armstrong Township.
Kurt Hauselman, I'm director of the Planning Department, and I reside in Wolf Township. And although I've resided in many townships within accounting over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're going to have the presentation by Fran DeJonge, who's deputy director of the Planning Commission. Welcome Fran, thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission. My name is Fran DeJonge, I'm deputy director of the Planning Department, and I reside in Lindsay Borough. The National Flood Insurance Program was authorized in 1968 by Congress as a result of the ever-increasing damages that the country was experiencing due to flooding. At that time, Congress was attempting to find a way that people who live in the flood plain are able to insure themselves against flooding. At that point, there were no insurance companies doing flood insurance because the rates were so high, people did not purchase it. In 1972, a lot of us remember that we had Agnes. Agnes was a flood that covered almost six states in the Northeast. At that point, it was the largest single natural disaster that the company had, or that the country has had. During Agnes, only 1,900 municipalities within the entire country were participating in the flood insurance program. And in Agnes, they only paid out a very, very, very small fraction of the damage covered by flood insurance. After 1972, Congress then reauthorized the flood insurance program, linking flood insurance to nationally-backed mortgages. At that point, it required almost anybody who had a mortgage, who lived in the flood plain, to purchase insurance. The National Flood Insurance Program is actually a three-legged stool. On one leg, it has insurance. On the other leg, it has flood plain mapping. The third leg are ordinances that the municipalities adopt that regulate what happens in the flood One of the things that has happened over the last few, well, flood insurance itself, was a surprisingly self-sufficient program. The National Flood Insurance was very proud of the fact that they would have bad years and they would have good years, but over time, they were solvent. When Katrina hit, it came after about four or five large hurricanes that hit Florida and the Gulf Coast. We had Katrina. After Katrina, we had major flooding in the Mississippi. Then we had major flooding everywhere else. Congress in 2012 passed a renewal of the National Flood Insurance Program, which happened on July 6th, and that was the Bigger Waters Act. Following on the heels of that was Superstorm Sandy. So at this point, the National Flood Insurance is close to $24 billion in debt, and that was one of the reasons why I believe Congress needed to act. Some definitions as we go forward. Things that you will be hearing if you are dealing with flood insurance. First thing is a FIRM. A FIRM is a flood insurance rate map. They are the maps that determine whether you're in the flood plain or out. A BFE. A BFE is your base flood elevation. That's the height of the 100-year flood. The 100-year flood is a 1% chance that this flood can occur in any one year. Prefirm. Those are houses that were built and existed before the community adopted their maps and joined the National Flood Insurance Program. For our community, it ranges between 1975 and 1981. Most of the major maps were adopted in 1981. A non-primary residence. This is a residence where the person who lives in it does not live there, lives there for less than 80% of the time. So a primary residence, you live there 80% of the time. Elevation certificates. Elevation certificates are being talked about a lot. Elevation certificates is what determines whether you're in the flood plain and how high or how low you are below the base flood elevation. And flood plain ordinances. Every municipality in Lycoming County, every municipality in Pennsylvania, has a flood plain ordinance. It's not working. It worked when I practiced it. Just hold on. Okay, thank you. The Bigger Waters Act, which reauthorized flood insurance, happened July 12th, 2000, or July 6th, 2012. That's an important date. The next important date that we're all seeing is October 1st. So any policies that were written after July 6th, flood insurance policies, so that includes any homes that sold after July 6th that purchased flood insurance, on October 1st, 2013, those policies with their renewals are supposed to move to full actuarial rates. Any new policies that are sold have to be sold at the full actuarial rates. A pre-firm residence or a business that had a lapsed policy, once they renew their policy or pick up their policy again, they will immediately shift to a full risk. Then we have pre-firm primary residences. That's a residence that the homeowner lives in more than 80% of the year. They do not move anytime soon, there's no timeline on that, but there is a 16% to 20% possible increase in their flood insurance annually. Pre-firm non-resident, non-primary residences. So this would be vacation homes, rentals, any home that the primary owner does not live in 80% of the time. They will begin going up in premiums 25% a year until they reach full actuarial rates. Pre-firm repetitive loss properties, or severe repetitive loss properties, will also begin increasing 25% every year until they reach full actuarial rates. Pre-firm business properties will begin moving up 25% a year, every year, until they reach full actuarial rates. Each of these categories require that the policy owner gets an elevation certificate. It worked. Okay. So I mentioned the terms you know, but there's also a section here that I want to point out really quickly. It's this grandfathering. If there is a map change, if, as our county is, we're going through a remapping project within our county, and your house was not in the 100-year flood plain, but you are mapped in due to the changes in the maps, there is a preferred risk policy, which is different from all of the other policies available, and at this point FEMA has no plans on changing the preferred risk. So for Lycoming County, what is our exposure? Within Lycoming County, we have 53,293 parcels. We calculated using our mapping software that we have 5,355 parcels in the flood plain. Of the total parcels in our country, 10%, in our county, 10% are in the flood plain. According to FEMA's most recent numbers that I was able to access, we have 1,982 policies that will be affected by bigger waters. So that means, that's 37% of our structures in the flood plain. What I mean by what is our exposure? We have in Jersey Shore, 1,600 properties, or 800, or yeah, 1,600 properties, we have 800 in the flood plain. Approximately 50% of Jersey Shore is in the flood plain. Only 59% of those are shown as having, being affected by the bigger waters changes. We may have some houses that have been mitigated, so they've been elevated. Chances are, we have a large number of houses without flood insurance. So when we're discussing some of the terms, and in this illustration, this is a FEMA illustration, so they're considering a house that's $2,500 of damage that they're insuring. Most of our houses in the flood plain probably are closer to $100,000. But you have the BFE. In this illustration, if this house is four feet below the BFE, the annual insurance will be $9,500 a year. The next illustration is if it is at the BFE, at the base flood elevation, the insurance will be about $1,400. If the house is three feet above the elevation, we're looking at $427. So as it stands, you have the BFE, the base flood elevation. For every foot you're down, the insurance goes up. For every foot you're above the BFE, your insurance goes down. Now we're going to talk about the NIFP elevation certificate. Again, the important information that every homeowner needs to know is what is your base flood elevation? This is a form that is filled out by a licensed surveyor. So they'll determine what your base flood elevation is at your structure. They look for the top of the bottom floor. For us, this is vitally important. The top of the bottom floor, as defined by the National Flood Insurance Program, is the basement. If your house has all four sides of the basement below grade, you have a basement. The top of the bottom floor is the bottom of the basement. So what we're looking at are houses where you have the BFE here. You might have three or four feet of water on the ground, and then you have six or 10 feet below ground. You are not three feet below the BFE, you're 10 to 13 feet below the BFE. In the National Flood Insurance Program, in our ordinances, basements are not allowed in the flood plain. The reason for this, and I'm sure most of you have seen this time and time again, is water comes up, people's basements blow in. When you have hydrostatic pressure, where you have unequal pressure between the basement walls and the water outside, the basements will blow in. So if we look at a typical house, and right down here, we have the house, we have the top of the floor, you walk up your steps, there's a floor. If the BFE is here, so you have a little water on the ground, but your first floor is above the BFE, and your basement is down, and it floods, this is what you'll have. Flood insurance will charge you below the BFE to the bottom of the basement. If a house was mitigated, this is what it would look like. It would have no basement, the BFE would be here, and the top of the, that becomes the top of the bottom floor then, and it is out and above the base flood elevation. Here's another illustration of what we normally see in our area. You have the basement, the top of the first floor, you walk up, you have the BFE is here. So we get water. Water comes all the way up here. A house in this instance that would be mitigated would have the basement removed, filled in, no longer have a basement, have the walls built with vents so that you allow the water to flow in and out. You don't keep anything in the basement, and the house is elevated above the BFE. Almost all of our ordinances in Lycoming County require that a house is built a foot and a half above the BFE. And that's really a benefit to the homeowner because flood insurance will count that as being two feet above the BFE. I'm going to show you an example of houses that are just very problematic for us. So this is the 100-year flood, and in this structure, if you did it, if you measured it right here, the BFE would be 3.14 feet above the ground. This is the house. So you walk up, walk up to the door, just about three feet. So I can honestly say that this particular house probably has never gotten water on the first floor. But it has three feet of water around the house. It's an amount of water that you cannot ignore in terms of determining if it's in the flood plain. So it would be mapped in the flood plain. This particular house has a basement. So instead of being three at the BFE, it's probably 10 feet below the BFE. So the flood plain management part, what we're talking about, is it determines what you are allowed to do and not allowed to do in the flood plain, and it really is your best friend. What we've seen with the way the insurance rates have changed, if you're built according to the ordinances, you're going to be okay. So what does the ordinance require you to do? It requires you not to have a basement. It requires that if you have an enclosed space below your first floor, that it's properly vented. Garage doors do not work as vents. They have to be, it has to be passive. That water has to be able to come and go as it pleases without any interruption. And your utilities have got to be elevated above the base flood elevation. Again, every municipality has a flood plain ordinance. You can contact your township, or your borough, or your city, and they will tell you what is in the ordinance. Property owners, when they are building, or retrofitting, or fixing, or mitigating this issue, should always consider where they can to go higher than the ordinance requires. Because again, every foot you're higher, your insurance goes down. And a pre-firm house should consider mitigation steps. One of our problems that we've had, this flood insurance program has been here for 40 years. The same properties are in the same condition they were 40 years ago. And now is our time to look at what steps we can take to help mitigation. Here's an example of something that a lot of people are familiar with. That's Pier 87, right after Lee. Here's, that was a bird's eye view, this is the straight-on view. This is Pier 87 today. When they built, they moved it back, they moved it up. I believe they're three foot above the base flood elevation. This is a business owner who will not be impacted by bigger waters. If anybody is interested, our presentation is going to be on our website. It will be under the flood hearing. If you click on it, it will go directly to the presentation. But I wanted to point out that if you go to the Planning Department and go to our mitigation page, we have a flood insurance link here that has a lot of links that deal with bigger waters. It will take you to our flood mapping website. It will be able to determine where you are in the flood maps. You can turn cross-sections on and get an idea of what your BFE is. And that's my contact information if anybody would like to call me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. Next on the agenda, we have our expert testimony coming up. First present is Jason Think, who's vice president of the Williamsport-Lycoming County
Good afternoon. As Herman said, my name is Jason Think, and I am the executive vice president of the Williamsport-Lycoming Chamber of Commerce and the Industrial Properties Corporation. I am a resident of the city of Williamsport. I am here this afternoon not only representing the chamber president, Vince Mattio, who is out of town, but also the executive committee of the board of directors of the chamber. First, let me state to you that the chamber is not an organization that normally supports government subsidies. For the most part, we believe that programs like flood insurance should stand on their own. However, there are times when, at least on a temporary basis, subsidies are in fact needed. The unintended consequences of the reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program that are confronting both business owners and residents throughout the area in the United States with premium rate increases that could force small businesses to close and individuals to loser's homes is one such instance. How large are these rate increases? We have spoken to a number of businesses throughout Lycoming County, and the stories are all similar. Large increases that many simply cannot afford to pay. Let me read to you. Let me read to you one email Vince Mattio received that will give you a pretty good idea of what is happening to some businesses required to have flood insurance. This email came from a commercial property owner in Jersey Shore. This email came from a commercial property owner in Jersey Shore. "Hello, Mr. Mattio. I was relieved to see your message in a Chamber connection. We just received word last week from the insurance company that our premium would increase from $2,800 a year to $40,000." Yes, that's right, it's not a typo. "My husband and I purchased two buildings last November 2012. They are historical brick apartment buildings on South Main Street in Jersey Shore. We had great plans to bring back old-time Main Street along with the Riverfront project that is supposed to happen. We completed two storefronts, an old barber shop and the American Rescue workers before we made, we were made aware of what was about to happen. We were in the process of purchasing an attached building from Jersey Shore State Bank when thankfully, they told us about this rate increases that were possible. Our insurance company suggested that we obtain a flood elevation certificate, which we did at a cost of $1,000. We found that the premium is rated at the basement level, ours is 16 feet below flood level. Needless to say, we are not prepared to pay $40,000 upfront forever. The bank is now placing forced coverage on our mortgage. If we should encounter a flood, we will have no coverage on our buildings. We cannot afford it and cover our expenses of maintaining the buildings. Please feel free to use our story. I am very concerned for Jersey Shore. I have learned that at least half of the town is in the 100-year floodplain. If residents choose to move from these properties, the tax base is decreased, and the remainder of the town will have to endure higher taxes. I plan to attend a hearing to discuss the flood insurance reform December 11th at Klump Auditorium, Pennsylvania College of Technology. Thank you, Larry and Mike Portanova." As you can hear, these folks are not alone, and while not, everyone's increase may be as shocking as this one. They are all extremely large, and one fact that compounds the problem is that flood insurance is payable upfront on an annualized basis. With that said, I am not here today with a solution. However, I am here to urge the Planning Commission, County Commissioners, and elected officials at all levels of government to do everything in their power to convince Washington to stop the implementation of this bill until such time that a proper impact study on the cost of the changes can be done and a program can be developed that at the very least weans property owners off the subsidy. I know that Dr. Mattio met with Congressman Marino, as you heard earlier, and he is working to find a solution to these unintended consequences. We need to do everything in our power to assist him in finding a fair and equitable solution to a problem that was caused when these subsidies were put into place and, if not fixed, may well result in businesses being closed, jobs lost, rendering property values meaningless, artificially, that also artificially inflate the values of the properties not in a floodplain, and drive people from their homes not by floodwaters but by these premium increases. While it is easy to say they should abandon the properties, are you ready to abandon your property? A property that may not have a value or a buyer and face financial hardship? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Our next presenter is Mr. Dan Berninger, who's the CEO and President of Muncie Bank
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Berninger. I'm President and CEO of the Muncie Bank and Trust Company. Our bank was established in 1893, and our main office is located in the center of town, in basically the same location since its inception, on the corner of Main Street and Water Street. I grew up in Muncie, and I very much remember the flood of '72, and it's something that I'll certainly never forget. In that flood, our bank had one and a half feet of water on the first floor. Muncie Bank is largely a consumer or residential lender. We do home loans, home equity loans, and smaller commercial loans. Today, we have approximately $267 million in real estate loans, which are largely, and for the most part, located in Lycoming County. Many of the areas that we finance are located in or near floodplain areas. In the borough of Muncie, for example, there are 1,028 structures, 415 of those are located in the 100-year floodplain, which works out to about 40%. Montgomery has about 30%. Muncie Creek Township, 15%, and Old Lycoming Township, 14%, just to name a few. As a bank, we have determined that we have approximately 250 mortgages that require flood insurance. And as an FDIC-insured bank, we're mandated to require flood insurance on all our loans in the floodplain. Flood insurance for many of our customers is and has been a financial struggle for many years. The enactment of the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012 set in motion unprecedented change in the National Flood Insurance Program. The law is ushering in sweeping reform for the flood insurance premium rate structure, flood hazard mapping, and floodplain management and mitigation. At the same time, the law made significant changes to lender flood insurance compliance requirements. Congress's motivation for reforming this National Flood Insurance Program was clear and compelling. It sought to restore the financial solvency and stability of the federal flood insurance program. The statutory changes, however, affect all major components of the program and will have profound effects on consumers who own property located in a flood zone, on real estate markets, and on lenders charged with ensuring that borrowers purchase and maintain flood insurance over the life of the loan. Unfortunately, the full impact of these changes is only beginning to emerge as regulators are in the early stages of implementing the statute. Although well-intentioned, the legislation generates a number of interpretive issues that require careful regulatory implementation. The agencies have addressed a number of those issues by expressly excluding commercial purpose loans and most subordinate or secondary lien loans from the escrow requirements. Nevertheless, there are additional problems that the proposal presents that warrant correction to ensure that the program goals Congress sought to advance are met. These include making additional exclusions to the escrow requirements, providing further clarity regarding force placement, and creating an additional path to safe harbor or promote the acceptance of private insurance policies. Finally, the rule must provide the industry with a realistic period of time to implement these required changes. Due to Bigger Waters Act, dramatic premium increases are already being assessed. As new flood maps are rolled out across the country, premiums will begin to increase, and in some cases dramatically, for properties that built to code at the time of construction. These increases are triggered with the adoption of new maps, which are including more and more properties in special flood hazard areas that previously had not been required to carry flood insurance. On a national basis, we know that the number could be large, possibly over a million properties. It is impossible to fully know how many grandfather properties will be impacted until FEMA flood maps across the country are adopted. As a bank, we're beginning to see the effect of this new flood regulation on our customers. One customer recently purchased a property on Water Street in Muncie and was renovating the property for future sale. This property is about, I'd say, a block from our bank. The overall value was expected to be $125,000. He contacted his local insurance agent and was shocked to learn that the premium would not be the $1,000 that he thought, but rather $9,500 per year. He stopped his construction, and he's not sure what he's going to do. Now, this type of increase is on a new issue for flood, for a flood insurance policy. For residential customers who already own a property in the floodplain, they're typically seeing, at this point, about a 25% increase in their renewal. This increase will continue for at least the next four years until it's at the fully indexed rate. I believe that when Bigger Waters Act was passed, I did not believe that anyone really thought about the consequences. I believe that the federal government was thinking that most people live near water, and they do that because it's a lifestyle choice, and that is simply not true. 55% of the country live near water, including rivers and streams, because that is where the commerce has taken them. Representative Maxine Waller is a Democrat from California, a ranking member of the House Financial Services Committee, who was a chief architect in the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act, recently released a statement, and she said, "Over the past several months, I have felt the harm and the heartache that many Americans have already experienced as a result of the changes to the National Flood Insurance Program. From the start, I have made clear that I would lead the effort to fix the unintended consequences of the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act. The Bigger Waters Act substantially and immediately devalued the investments of hard-working, tax-paying Americans. This act, if left unchecked, will affect consumer confidence and the nation's economy, including the banking and mortgage industry. The extreme rise in premium costs may ultimately lead to financial distress for residents and property owners. Real estate markets will freeze, and local tax bases will erode. No one wants to pay incentives for building in harm's way, nor do we want to advocate for the continued subsidy of severe repetitive loss properties. However, I believe we have a moral and economic duty to protect property owners who have played by the rules and built as their government told them to, and in accordance with the government guidelines in effect at the time of their construction. They should not lose their homes and businesses due to no fault of their own." There is a small group of individuals that today make up about 200, who've been meeting each week through conference calls. The group is called the Coalition for Sustainable Flood Insurance. This group originated in New Orleans, Louisiana, and now has representation from nearly every state in the country. Their goal is to recognize that there is a better way than the Bigger Waters Act to reform the flood program, and that until Congress figures out what that is, homeowners should not suffer needlessly. I do not think that anyone is opposed to financially sound flood insurance program and doesn't believe that some higher rates are appropriate. Despite Bigger Waters' best intentions, though, the rate increases that too many property owners are facing are simply unfair and are a threat to communities and real estate markets throughout the United States. The resolution requesting the United States Congress to pass the Homeowners' Flood Insurance Affordability Act specifically supports bipartisan House Bill 3370 and its Senate companion, Senate Bill 1610, which would suspend the National Flood Insurance Program for four years until FEMA has an opportunity to complete the affordability study, which was mandated by the Bigger Waters Act, and Congress has an opportunity to consider the recommendations put forth in that study. The legislation was introduced about five or six weeks ago now, and already has 149 cosponsors in the House of Representatives, and on the Senate side has 24 cosponsors. This is common sense legislation, and Congress should understand the potential impact of the Bigger Waters Act before implementing it. While I do not know if this will ever go to vote, it is my hope that Congress will do what is good for our country and correct the profound unintended consequences of the Bigger Waters Act. We must remember that this is not simply a Lycoming County issue as it affects all 50 states. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next presenter is Mr. Todd Arthur, Long Ridge Realty and Appraisal Services, and
Hello. As was said, my name is Todd Arthur. I'm a certified residential real estate appraiser, and I'm also a licensed real estate broker. Plus, I am the unfortunate one to own a business in the flood community of Muncie. That being said, before I begin to elaborate on the sales analysis and the potential grave scenarios currently facing a number of property owners here in Lycoming County, due to this wide spectrum of premium dollar increases resulting from the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012, I felt it important to talk briefly about the historic aspects relating to the development of our region here in Lycoming County, Pennsylvania. In an effort to gain a better understanding of the multitude of reasons behind why so many developed properties, including residential, commercial, and industrial, are situated within the flood-prone areas, to begin with, we need to take a look back in our history and see why the early settlements of Lycoming County were originally established along the banks of the Susquehanna River and the tributaries that flow into this river. Many of you history buffs know that the Susquehanna River and her tributaries played an important role in the growth of our local industry, commerce, and community. Early forts were constructed to provide protection along the trails and paths that followed the Susquehanna River. These trails and paths eventually turned into public roads. The areas near and around these protected forts became the early settlements that later formed into the network of river communities known as Muncie, Montgomery, Montorsville, Loyalsock, Jersey Shore, and Williamsport. These communities eventually became our city, boroughs, and townships in the late 1700s, early 1800s. Flower mills, sawmills, lumberbooms, canals, manufacturing plants, banks, stores, and railroads were built in or near these river communities. Means for transportation in those early days was very much limited. However, jobs required workers, and workers needed housing. Remember, it was ideally best to be able to walk to work or to the store. Property owners whom today are fortunate enough to own properties situated outside of the floodplain areas of Lycoming County need to understand that a large percentage of the eventual outgrowth of development in areas contiguous to the floodplains grew as a direct result of the long-established infrastructural buildout that expanded out from these noted river communities. Historians write about the politics surrounding the establishment of the City of Williamsport as the county seat. Williamsport was selected over other, better, potentially suited locations, even though Williamsport was known at the time to be an area prone to flooding. The Lycoming County Courthouse and the jail were not only constructed within the floodplain. A large percentage of Williamsport was originally developed within major flood-prone and swamp areas. Without flood protection, the downtown business commercial district of Williamsport would not exist as it does today. Over the past 50 years, the City of Williamsport, parts of Loyalsock Township and Montorsville here in Lycoming County have been afforded additional protection from flooding by a combination of measures. Whereas, the less fortunate but equally significant in historic river communities such as Muncie, Montgomery, and Jersey Shore have not been afforded the same levels of flood protection. Now, you're going to hear some similar numbers that others have talked about. 415 out of 1,028 addressed structures in Muncie Borough are currently situated within a regulated floodplain. That equates to 40% of the total addressed structures. 184 out of 604 structures in Montgomery Borough are also situated in the floodplain. That equates to 30% of their total structures. 801 out of 1,598 structures in Jersey Shore are similarly situated in flood-prone areas. flood-prone areas, and equates to 50% of Jersey Shore Borough. As October 1st, 2013, the date when Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act premium changes went into effect, the resulting shockwaves created by these overly oppressive flood reforms negatively hit the flood-prone markets hard here in Lightcoming County and across the country in a severe and totally unwarranted fashion. Most industry professionals were unaware of the coming changes. This includes the real estate, the banking, and even the insurance industry. The specific property owners whom this new law negatively impacts were given no formal notice of any coming change, no time to budget, no time to plan. The property owners, the real estate and banking industry were blindsided. Many are still in a state of shock, thinking and hoping that this cannot really be happening. The political action committees have been activated on both sides of this issue. Keep in mind, a large percentage of property owners that have been paying flood insurance for years and years, first of all, had no idea that the premiums they were paying were even subsidized. This new law has resulted in mass confusion and a large amount of misinformation being circulated. Premium quotes have differed greatly from one insurance company to another. The need for flood elevation certificates was initially unclear. Slang terms like "pre-firm," "repetitive loss," "lapse policy," "primary versus non-primary residence," and other terminology remains an area of confusion for many. Speculation as to whether any number of proposed new amendments relating to this new law will soon be given consideration continues to remain unclear. As a result, the current market report for our immediate area here in Lightcoming County as of this date reflects a real estate market where the sales-related activities within flood-regulated areas have basically slowed down, almost coming to a complete stop. Very few regulated properties have transferred ownership since October 1st, 2013, or even in the pending sale process. The large majority remain on the market for sale. One recent pending sale on a flood-prone property in Muncie offered at public auction on November the 10th of this year, of which I personally attended this auction, only brought In comparison, the current county, Lightcoming County assessment value rendered on this particular flood-prone property is $59,130. Taking the $59,130 at the 2,005 assessment value, times the current common level ratio of 1.26, the Lightcoming County assessment projects the 2,000 market value at $74,504, when in fact, the actual selling price is less than $25,000. Assuming even if this flood-prone property actually goes to closing, it equates to 1/3 of the current tax assessment valuation. As an appraiser, I've personally spoken to a number of real estate agents in regards to this extremely serious matter. Pending sales have fallen apart as a direct result of this new law. Some brokers are pulling their real estate listings off the market. Others are looking to alternative financing models as a means to procuring a sale. A few property owners with homes for sale are trying to rent out their properties. Price adjustments and incentives are being considered. There's a real fear amongst the real estate community that a number of property owners may not have the financial means to seek alternate paths out of this legislative debacle. In an effort to save time, I've only utilized MLS, Multiple Listing Service Data, for residential sales in the Muncie area of Lightcoming County for this analysis. Sales were selected dating back to January 2004, prior to the September 2004 flood known as Hurricane Ivan that impacted certain parts of the Muncie area, and sales data was collected up until December 4th of this year. There were approximately 557 total sales, residential sales now is what I'm speaking in the Muncie area over the last nine-year timeline, of which 104 of these sales were identified as flood-prone. On average, there were 62 residential closed sales a year. Of that, 12 of the 62 sales were identified as being flood-prone, or about 19% of the total. The nine-year running average sale price for a flood-prone property in the Muncie area was calculated at $76,355. Now, researching back over the previous 12 months from December 4th, 2013 to December 4th, 2012 for the Muncie area, there were 51 sales, residential sales, of which 13 were identified as being flood-prone properties, or approximately 25% of the total sales. The 12-month average sale price for a flood-prone property, residential property in the Muncie area was calculated at $109,486. These numbers represented positive trend in market values for flood-prone properties within the Muncie area over the last nine years. However, going forward, it becomes speculative if these positive trends will continue. The current short-term outlook appears grim. Whether or not we'll look back 10 or 20 years from now and say otherwise remains to be seen. A lot depends on whether a viable pathway out of this debacle can be obtained. Of huge importance and worthy of emphasis are particular terms written into the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act. These terms, in my analysis as a real estate appraiser, will prove to be devastating for many unsuspecting property owners, especially if these terms stand uncorrected by our legislators. The terms state that a "pre-firm primary or non-primary residence or business that its policy first became effective on or after July 6th of 2012," not 2013, "are subject to immediate shift to full-risk rates. Tentative rates are available for one year, and an elevation certificate will be required." These current terms within this act, as I understand, mean that many unsuspecting property owners that purchase properties in flood-regulated areas between July 6th, 2012 and October 1st of this year will be facing the cost incurred in having a flooded elevation certificate completed and could be facing devastating premium increases. These property owners are not even aware of the pending increases soon to be in their mailbox over the coming months. As an example that represents very concern, and I was given permission by the local Realtor to share this story. A flood-prone property in Muncie area was listed in August 2013 for $79,900. The property came under contract within a few days after being listed for sale. The buyers were made aware of the subject property being situated within the Zone AE floodplain. The buyers went ahead and checked in for the cost of flood insurance coverage and were informed by their insurance agent that the, this is in August now, that the flood insurance premium was going to be around $800, depending on your deductible, et cetera. A contract was secured on the property. Property inspections, appraisal, and a few identified FHA-related repairs were completed. Substantial monies now have been spent by both the buyer and the seller. A closing date for mid-October 2013 was scheduled. The buyers go ahead and move out, having recently purchased another home. Shortly before closing, the buyers go to obtain their insurance binder for their flood insurance, and at this time were informed that the premium is now going to be $2,300 versus the $800. The additional increase in the premium resulted in this young couple debt-to-income ratio being considered too high. The sale has fallen apart. This property now sits vacant, and the Realtor indicates that the stigma attached to the property because of the flood insurance rate spike scare remains still for sale. The sellers are left currently trying to rent out the property in order to generate the much-needed income due to not now owning two properties. Another similar story recently occurred in Muncie, provided by another Realtor. Negotiations on this real estate sale fell apart after the potential buyer obtained an insurance quote on a residential property situated in a flood-prone area. The premium went from $1,000 to $4,600. Up serious consequence due to not being able to sell their property, these property owners are now facing foreclosure. It is becoming common to hear "full-risk premium rate quotes" in the $6,000 to $12,000 range, five to 10 times higher than what their 2012 rates were. You also heard of the $40,000 quote on the commercial property. Now, I personally own a property at 25 North Main Street in Muncie. This property is where my real estate office is located. My 2012 premium was approximately $1,200. The $1,200 premium was based on $110,000 worth of building coverage, zero content coverage, and a $2,000 deductible. According to my insurance agent, my full-risk rating was tentatively projected to be $6,100. Just two days ago, I was informed that my tentative rate is no longer going to be $6,100. It's going to be $13,400. I'm faced with a continual yearly premium increase until hitting full-risk premium. Eventually, I'll be paying over $1,000 a month in flood insurance, noting that my property has not flooded since back in 1972, 40 years ago. At that time, my building did suffer from about 12 inches of water on the first floor. The projected base elevation for my property is 505 feet, thus indicating the potential for five feet of water throughout my first floor. FEMA has a website. It's called floodsmart.gov, and this website calculates the estimated damages of a one-story building containing 2,000 square feet. And they state that if the floodwaters hit two feet, then the damages are estimated at $62,880. If the floodwaters hit four feet, the damages are estimated at $74,580. My building's approximately 2,000 square feet. Of similar interest, you'll note if you go to this website that they don't go above four feet in damages. Justin Reese, who is here and has accompanied me as a certified general appraiser. Justin recently completed an appraisal on my property in 2012 for bank financing. He's going to explain as a result of the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act, the how and why I, as a property owner, have potentially lost over $100,000 in equity in this particular real estate holding just since last year. My story represents that of countless other property owners with holdings in similar flood-prone areas. I'd like to welcome Justin up here.
Thanks, Todd, for the opportunity to come up here to the playing commission. Like Todd said, back in 2012, I had the opportunity to go in and view Todd's property, completed an appraisal on it for bank financing purposes. At that time, we determined the value of the property around $195,000. Due to the increase that we now anticipate, Todd's property, having to pay flood insurance rates in excess of over $12,000. What that's going to do is that that $12,000 loss in net operating income, if you capitalize that at 10%, is a potential loss in value of approximately $120,000. That's pretty significant when you're talking about a $195,000 property. You know, so, and I don't think that this is something that's just going to affect properties in the floodplain. You're going to have a lot of downstream effects, and that's primarily what I'm going to speak about today. Because of, when you, when you have properties in the floodplain and you have these catastrophes come through, what's going to happen is, yeah, those properties are going to be affected. You know, you're going to have these sharp increases in property, you know, in flood insurance rates for these properties. These rates are going to happen very suddenly and with, like Todd said, without warning for quite a few people. Like Todd said, if, you know, if property owners experience a decrease of, you know, 25, 50, or even, what, 66%, such as that property down in Carpenter Street, you know, what that's going to do is you're going to have people coming in, and investors will come in and purchase these properties at a steep discount. When they purchase these properties at a steep discount, what that will do, or what I anticipate that will do, is that it will disrupt the tax basis for the, for those municipalities. When you have 40%, such as in, you know, Muncie Borough, 50% in Jersey Shore Borough, of those properties, of those taxable parcels located in the floodplain, and you wipe out, you know, a large percentage of the equity or of the value of those properties, what that's going to do is that's going to decrease the tax basis within those municipalities. As a result, you know, due to budgets for municipalities, you know, they have to bring in a certain amount of money to operate. What that will do is that'll raise millages within those areas, and then those that live outside the areas will have to pay higher rates to compensate for it. What I see happening then, down the line after that, is as those properties that are, you know, paying higher rates, you know, go further along, then, you know, you have a devaluation of those properties because what, what buyers will do is they'll say, you know, I'll use an example. Say you have, you know, millages in Muncie are 40 mills, and Hughesville, which has one parcel in it, might be 20 mills. It's a $100,000 property. You know, you go have a buyer coming in saying, "Well, the property in Muncie for a $100,000 property is, you know, $4,000 a year in taxes. The one in Hughesville's $2,000 a year in taxes. Which one are you going to choose?" You know, there's going to be a clear differentiation there of areas that have generally been ubiquitous historically for us. I mean, we've always compared those as similar areas. So, I, I think it's really going to affect all of us through this, whether you live in the floodplain or not. The other thing I'd like to speak to is the fact that there will be some properties which cannot afford to pay flood insurance. Then the banks will be forced to take the properties back through foreclosure, and as a result, it will cause them to, you know, decrease the overall value of the properties because of the foreclosure proceedings, you know, that go along with it. That, that brings down all the properties in, in the area. There's one other thing that I don't think anyone's talked to about yet, and that's that there's different requirements amongst different lenders. Some lenders might require coverage just for the mortgage amount. Some lenders out there might require coverage for entire replacement costs on some of these buildings. You know, if you have a lender, if you have a $70,000 property and a lender only requires mortgage amount, that's going to be a very different rate paid than if that property requires full replacement costs, and that replacement cost, you know, might be $150,000, $200,000. You know, think about how much it would cost to build one of those buildings all over here. So, that's, that's a lot of what we need to consider here. The, the other thing that we need to be aware of is the automatic trigger for full-rate obligations retroactive to July 2012. Most of us were not aware of this retroactive rate hike in Bigger Waters. I know in the, in the real estate industry, this really blindsides. First, I think we heard about it was right around October, you know, beginning of October or something like that. So, you know, we've been trying to get a lot of information out to our memberships and organize politically as much as possible, so I know that's something that we're working on. But I, I think that the, that these experiences are not atypical, but it's something that we need to be aware of as we, you know, as we go forward. And when we think about this within having, trying to find solutions for it and trying to find the best way to move forward with the situation as it is, it's causing a great erosion of people's well-being and economic well-being and their overall net worth, and it's happening very suddenly and over time. And that's pretty much it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin and Todd. Next presenter on the agenda is Justin Winters from Nationwide Insurance.
Good evening, and thank you for the invitation to speak here tonight. My name's Justin Winters. I'm an associate agent with Winters Insurance in Muncie, Pennsylvania. I was asked to speak here tonight to give you a brief overview of what I witnessed with regard to flood insurance changes due to the Bigger Waters Act. For the past six years, I've been in the insurance industry at the agency level. During this time, I've been placing flood insurance policies with the National Flood Program through the Write Your Own program. National Flood Insurance Program is sold through roughly 100 insurance companies on any given year to consumers. National Flood sets these rates for the policies and ensures roughly 5.6 million properties in America. Later, I'll give you two examples of how these rates will change for two properties in Muncie who have obtained elevation certificates. So first, I'll start with some homeowners' reactions and the general public's concerns. Our community members are very upset, confused, and unsure of what course of action to pursue. Their finances are being drastically changed due to the Bigger Waters Act. Under the current legislation, the National Flood Insurance Program renewal premiums are increasing roughly 16% to 25% for this first year, which was effective October 1st, 2013. These rates will continue to increase between 16% and 25% each year until the unsubsidized rate is reached. The only way to give an accurate unsubsidized rate at this time is to have an elevation certificate done and to pay for the elevation survey. In addition to the flood insurance rates, flood insurance rate increases, these homeowners are concerned about the loss of equity in their property. Todd and Justin just got done speaking to that fact. Home sales for properties in the flood zones have decreased to the point of stopping. If these homes go unsold or are unsellable, the community is concerned how the local tax base will be affected. With the decrease in tax base, will the local municipalities and school districts be able to adjust their budgets accordingly? Citizens with homes outside of the traditional flood zones also fear they may be forced to shoulder the burden of increased taxes. Their concerns are that bigger waters will affect all the homeowners in each community. The NFIP rates prior to bigger waters were based on the flood zone that you were in, coverage amounts, and deductibles. There are many different coverage amounts and many different deductible options, which leads to many different premiums for each different property. The largest factors I've seen affecting premiums under the current legislation are the elevation of the property. It's subject to the lowest floor elevation in relation to the base floor elevation, still the coverage amount and still the deductible. These properties will be required to have an elevation certificate complete before the owners will know what their true full unsubsidized rate will be. When current homeowners attempt to sell these properties, new buyers will also need to carry the new higher unsubsidized rate immediately before they're closing, they'll have to pay for the first year premium. New buyers are also typically carry a higher amount of flood insurance coverage than the existing homeowner due to the purchase price of the property typically being higher than what the current owner owes on the mortgage. With these unsubsidized rates and higher coverage amounts, are these homes going to be able to be sold? Next, I'll move into non-residential mixed-use properties, a couple of examples and concerns. Business properties in the flood zone will also immediately be impacted. These flood insurance rates will increase approximately 25% per year at renewal until the full rate is achieved. Upon the sale of these properties, the rates will also instantly increase to the unsubsidized rate. The estimated rate examples I've seen, over 1,000% increase. These properties will also be required to have an elevation certificate complete so that they know the true unsubsidized rate. First example here, this is an actual unsubsidized rate for a property on Main Street in Muncie. The property owner has obtained an elevation certificate. The lowest floor is 12 feet below the base flood elevation. The first floor is five feet below the base floor elevation. This is a mixed-use property. It's a non主ary, non-residential property and it has 75% residential occupancy, there's apartments. Current coverage is $55,000, $2,000 deductible. The premium is $594 per year. If you were to buy this property today, carry the exact same amount of coverage with the elevation certificate, it would be $6,067 a year. So this property owner's current flood insurance rate's going to increase approximately 25% a year until it gets to that roughly $6,000 number. The second instance, also a property on Main Street that the owner had an elevation certificate completed. The lowest floor is eight feet below base flood elevation with the first floor being seven feet below the base flood elevation. This is also a mixed-use property, non主ary residence, non-residential building with 50% residency, one apartment. Current coverage, $55,000, deductible $2,000. The premium's $594 per year. This property, the unsubsidized rate on this property would be $7,405. Same, this property owner will, their premiums will increase 25% a year until that unsubsidized rate's reached. Without elevation certificates, I can't give you an actual actuary rate. In order to obtain an elevation certificate, the property owner must pay for an elevation survey. And then the last point I'd like to make is about coinsurance. Coininsurance is how flood losses are settled. Coininsurance is a penalty on the lost settlement for any building insured to less than 80% of the reconstruction cost. As Justin alluded to earlier, if you've purchased a property for $50,000, many people carry $50,000 in flood insurance coverage. If the reconstruction cost in that home is $200,000, there's a large difference there. Reconstruction cost is the cost to replace your property with like-kind and quality materials. This is different than the market value, okay? So how the equation works is you take the amount of insurance you carry. For my first example, it would be $100,000 that you carry. The reconstruction, the cost of the home is $200,000, so roughly 50%. You multiply that times the amount of the loss, let's say a $40,000 loss. $40,000 loss multiplied by 50%, then you subtract your deductible. For this example, $5,000 deductible. So the approximate settlement for this $40,000 loss would be $15,000. And second example is the exact same property. If you insured it to $160,000, 80% of the reconstruction cost of $200,000. This loss will get dollar-for-dollar coverage. If the same person had a $40,000 flood loss, they'd receive $40,000 less their deductible of $5,000. Approximate settlement would be $35,000. So properly insuring your home, get the flood, it's going to continue to be vital. But with the increased rates from the National Flood Insurance Program, is it going to be possible? Is it going to be cost prohibitive for people? So, thank you for letting me speak here. My concern is how these changes will affect Main Street America in the future. With the impact of bigger waters, what does Muncie, Montgomery, Hughesville, Loyola-Soc, Montorsville, Jersey Shore, Williamsport, what are they going to look like in 2025? Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I'd like to move a little bit away from the agenda if I could. Just one, Representative Mirabito has shown up and he would like to address some of the pending legislation that is out there right now regarding this.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Actually, I just literally drove in from Harrisburg. But, you know, if you listen here, found somewhat dismal. But I'm actually sort of optimistic. Because if you look and understand, obviously, this was done on the federal level. This wasn't done on the state. But if you look at what the provision of the Act is and you listen to what Fran and some of the other speakers said today, there's ways to find solutions to this problem. You know, the key provision of the Act was to try to bring flood insurance rates in line with the true risk. That's what the Act is about. And if you listen to Fran's presentation, Pier 87, she said will not be affected because they mitigated the problem. They mitigated the problem. So, the problem, as we analyze this over the last couple of days, both in Harrisburg and in my office, we tried to bring in some people from the Insurance Committee and from some of the other committees. The problem is, how do we, A, get the resources to help people mitigate? And B, how do we get the time we need to mitigate? And both of those are solutions that can be done politically. In other words, this is not a problem without a political solution. But it will take a certain amount of willpower and other efforts to bring about the time necessary for people to mitigate and to bring about the financial resources to help consumers. I think what's really important, and a lot of the speakers spoke to this today, and I hope the paper will be sure to notice what they've said. This problem faces all of us as a community. Some people will have the reaction, well, heck, I didn't buy land there. This isn't my problem. But if you listen to what the speakers have said, the impact on the real estate market, the impact on lenders, and many people don't realize this, but in this last recession, the community banks in our community are what really kept many of our businesses afloat. Because when you couldn't go to the big commercial banks and work out of many of the major cities to get money, small businesses could get it from our community banks. And the mortgages underlying these houses are held by our community banks. So, I think that if we understand that it's a problem that faces all of us and if we understand that there are solutions. You know, I've passed out some testimony to the commission and there's extra copies. There are things that are being done at the federal level. I'm not going to review them in detail because I know people are tired and they want to ask questions. But I want to talk about a couple of things being done in Harrisburg and then I want to talk to you about a couple of proposals that we're trying to put together. First of all, before the General Assembly in Harrisburg, there's House Bill 152, which would create a Small Disaster Assistance Fund program. And this would provide some low-interest loans to homeowners and businesses affected by small-scale disasters that don't meet federal thresholds. And this program would provide grants to municipal governments for infrastructure repairs and it would be funded via about $150 million bond authorization that's established in that, in House Bill 153. House Bill 153 provides for a voter referendum to authorize the bond of $150 million to provide grant funding. And this deals with open spaces and flood mitigation. And House Bill 154 creates the Flood Hazardous Mitigation Act, which is designed to enhance stormwater management, flood mitigation projects by empowering local governments and the Commonwealth to acquire properties in flood areas. Finally, there's House Bill 1156, which seeks to create a program that will assist eligible Pennsylvanians with about 15% of their flood insurance premium as a way to help them. But obviously, if you have a jump from $1,200 a year to $12,000 a year, the 15% is not going to help. What we found when we looked at all these bills is that they don't do what some of the experts have told us we need to do, which is to mitigate. If we mitigate, then the flood rates, the premium rates go way, way down. To understand them and see, we're going to try to get some traction on them. Because I think that we have an obligation to do something more than simply supplement premiums that are not in line with what the true risk is. Well, the first idea that we have is to dedicate a portion of the Johnstown flood tax. Now, you know, the Johnstown flood tax was enacted to deal with flood mitigation programs. In fiscal year coming up, this is projected to generate about $311 million. And what we're thinking about and kicking around is taking a portion of this tax, which was intended to assist with flood mitigation and disaster relief, and provide it by way of flood mitigation projects to our local communities. You know, the additional funds could also come to the program. And if the communities have access to the funds, they can help the homeowners mitigate. Obviously, we need to get the time also to mitigate. And this would bring down the premiums so that people don't have to face leaving their homes and don't have to face what the real estate experts have told us will happen to the values. The second proposal we're kicking around is to establish a flood mitigation assistance program for individuals and families in high-risk areas and as defined by FEMA and designated on the NFIP map. This program would be funded by a dedicated source. You hear the common thread here, where do we get the money? Right? That's the common thread. But the Johnstown flood tax could be a source and another source could be either an additional small premium on insurance. And that gets touchy when you say to everyone, we want to add something, you know, $1 to your insurance premium. But again, do we have a sense in the Commonwealth that we face this problem as a community? And again, this would provide low-interest loans to help people mitigate, to bring experts out, and if they need to jack that house up, fill in that basement. And I can't, I actually want to give credit to Fran and the department because in my discussions with them, they clearly have a great understanding and helped me get educated about the fact that if we're able to mitigate, if we're able to buy the time to mitigate and get some funds to help people mitigate, that it's actually a problem that has a solution. And finally, another proposal is to establish the Flood Insurance Premium Assistance Program. And again, this is the program that would, you could again, funded partially with the Johnstown flood tax and also use that to help people buy the time they need. I think that it's important for people who own properties in the flood area to understand that it's going to have to be shared sacrifice all around. In other words, you can't expect to own that property and work towards getting it mitigated without experiencing some costs. But if we have something like a premium assistance program, it could probably help people get through the time period that they would need. So, each of these proposals is in a preliminary stage. I would welcome input from any and all of you in the community. I'm optimistic that if we mobilize, as one of the speakers said, 55% of the state lives in and around water. We're the third most flooded state in the nation. And it's not a problem without a solution. That's the good news. I mean, the question is, can we mobilize people and get the resources to do that? And I'm optimistic that we can. So, please feel free to contact us if you want to give us any more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. We're going to take a 10-minute break before we go to public comment, then we get back to the public comment. All right, I'm reconvening the meeting. At this time, we're going to go back to the agenda. At this time, I'm going to give the Plank Commission members the opportunity to ask our expert testifiers if they have any questions.
I have one for Mr. Banker. In the event these people are allowed to raise their home and their good financial standing, at this point, if their basement is at the BEF level, are you willing, as a banker, to provide those people a loan to raise their house if they so should choose at that point?
I got to tell you, that's a good question. And I think it's one that, you know, we're going to look at each individual loan, loan by loan. You know, to come across and say that, you know, yes, we'll definitely do that for every individual person, I can't say that. But I will tell you that, and I guess it's kind of a plug for community banks, you know, as a whole, we're very willing to try to work with people. And we're going to do, you know, it's not in our best interest to get a bunch of properties back either. So we're going to do what we can do to try to work things out for our folks that, as you heard me talk earlier, we have 250 properties that are affected. We're going to do what we can do to, you know, keep people in those properties.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any other questions from the planning commission of the experts? If not, then we're gonna go to the public comment portion of the agenda. And as you know, you folks all signed in and listened whether you wanted to speak or not. I'm taking the speakers in order of the way you were signed in. And the first speaker will be Mr. John Eck. And I want to remind everybody that three minutes for your presentation, and try not to repeat other issues we've already discussed, just in that we have quite a few people who do want to speak, so keep the project moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is John Eck. I'm chairman of the Board of Old LeCombe Township and a resident of LeCombe Township. I was gonna speak to a few things. A lot of things were mentioned here, but I just want to let people know that Old LeCombe Township has participated in flood buyout program since 96, 1996, in a process that LeCombe County Planning Department assists us with. At the moment, we own over 88 flood buyout lots, which we maintain, for which they're all, we receive no revenue on because we own them. A similar chart that Fram Johnken had shown here, showing boroughs and what structures are in those boroughs and how many of them are floodplain. She has spoken to the Boroughs Association last month, which I attended. And on the flip side of that report was for the townships. Old LeCombe Township still has 195 structures in the floodplain along LeCombe Creek. An approximately $100,000 per parcel on the average may be, that'd be about $20 million worth of value. Old LeCombe Township has about $242 million real estate valuation, a little bit more than that, which if we lost $20 million worth of valuation, we would lose about 8.3% value. Which as some presenter here earlier said, that the remaining property owners would have to pick up that 8.3% in order to keep Old LeCombe Township fiscally sound and functioning and providing services. It'd be a hardship. Again, it's not just for the property owners in the floodplain, but also for the municipalities and the remaining residents as well. One of the thoughts that I had, and because we are getting requests from property owners now, questions to our zoning officer, Kathy Hunter, in our office, about elevation certificates. And she's discussed things with them and recommended certain things for them to follow through. And one of the thoughts might be, and I know county planning department is very gracious, the county commissioners are very gracious in helping communities in this, in many regards. This might be a regard here for the county commissioners, see if there's a way for them to help this. Since we have so many property owners that are now required to have elevation certificates in order to find out what their premiums might be, if there's a way to, the commissioners can find some monies or grant monies to assist this with some sort of process where an engineering firm could put together a package or proposal to do this countywide, countywide. And because of the, considering the scale of the issue, maybe able to find a better way, more economical way to provide elevation certificates for property owners. Even if there's a way for the county to put it together, and even if it was a way that property owners pay for it, there'd probably be less than they would have to pay for if they went out and found their own engineer to do it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Eck. Next would be Mr. Jerry Walls.
Good evening, members of planning commission and commissioners. My name is Jerry Walls. I live in Le, in Leauxok Township and have a Montoursville mailing address. I ask as an unpaid chairman of the Board of the 22-county Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership that going forward, the Greenway Partnership be recognized as a stakeholder. And the reason for that is that we have a River Town Revitalization Strategic Program. It's our top priority program. And we see the problems in Jersey Shore. We've been out there doing fundraising to help do a project right there in downtown Jersey Shore. We see what the Portanova's have been facing, and we see that as being similar in 70 river towns along the Susquehanna. So this is a problem that spans 22 counties, it's in Pennsylvania. It's a problem that spans potentially all of those 70 river towns. And therefore, much of what we've been mobilizing in the way of a River Town Revitalization to prompt reinvestment in those river towns is at risk, at great risk. So we're not just an environmental organization. We're using different stormwater management approaches than the typical stormwater retention basin. We're using other kinds of recreational investments to stimulate reinvestment in those towns and make it a more livable and economically viable place as a community. So we ask that you consider, keep us on your list as a stakeholder. We will be developing further policy, and there was a lot of excellent information presented here tonight, and I commend the county planning commission for, again, being in the forefront of these discussions and issues. And I think that John Eck had an excellent suggestion for the county to consider putting a package together so we can bring the costs of doing the elevation certificates to a more affordable level for all property owners, if a, if a package can be put together with not just one, but say, a number of engineering firms who could, who could do this more efficiently and cost-effectively. So I won't get into anything more. We'll, we'll develop some policy positions which we will share with you. But thank you if you consider us a stakeholder.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next, next public comment will be from Mr. Jim McLean.
Thank you. My name is Jim McLean. I'm from the other end of the county. You've heard today from the people in the Muncie and eastern end of the county. I live in Jersey Shore. I'm lucky enough to be a real estate broker, Jackson Real Estate, selling properties in Jersey Shore, and I own an office building in Jersey Shore, just like Mr. Arthur had spoken to. Some specific numbers, just to try to crystallize what the meaning of this is, and I agree with the comment made earlier that it's a community problem, 50% of the properties in Jersey Shore are in the floodplain. For a smaller town as we have, we have a downtown and an uptown, depending on whether you're in or out of the floodplain. The first weekend in October, I was lucky enough to show three properties to a young couple, first-time homebuyers. They were living in her parents' basement. They were looking at properties. The first one she walked into, she said, this is a perfect home, I'll sign the papers right now. And I said, let's talk about flood insurance, and she walked away from the deal. The second house she went to was $125,000 sales price, and the seller had just gotten a flood certification survey done, an elevation site report, that showed that his premium was going from $1,100 or $1,200 a year to $6,982 per year, call it $7,000. Most mortgages are written for 30 years, so this couple would be looking at, it was a young couple, two children, wonderful people, but they ended up looking in South Williamsport, which is protected by the bike levy. They would have paid $7,000 a year for 30 years, or $210,000 for a $125,000 purchase price. And that's ridiculous. The, also, the $7,000 per year, if you break it down into almost $600 per month, would support another $110,000 worth of mortgage. So why should they pay for $225,000 worth of mortgage when they're only buying a $125,000 house? My wife, who is not here today, is also a real estate broker and is a certified appraiser. As such, she was contacted by a local bank appraiser saying, how do you value properties in the floodplain in Jersey Shore? And this gentleman said, I've made a decision approved by bank management that we will discount any appraisal in Jersey Shore 50%. So all, half the properties in Jersey Shore lost half their value overnight as a result of this act. And that, that's just ridiculous. I do have a, a solution. I'd like to expand a little bit on what Representative Maribito said, and rather than a $1 or 1% surcharge to all homeowner premiums, I'd like to see Congress consider, at the federal level, consider an act of God-type policy, that all homeowners would pay an enhanced premium, 1%, 5%, whatever it would take to make up the difference and get the funds sound again, for protection from all sorts of emergencies, not just floods, but hurricanes, mudslides, earthquakes, forest fires, you name it. I think that's more fair to the homeowner that is paying an enhanced premium, that he gets something out of it, rather than, well, you pay to help the five and a half million people in America that have flood insurance. So that's my suggested alternative, and then I'd like to see that idea passed along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Next, I'll give a little help with the last name, it's Justin Lintoy, I believe. Okay, then next would be Kevin Hodrick.
Good evening, planning commission and commissioners. I'm a resident of Leauxok Township and a licensed real estate agent here in, in the county. I would urge the planning commission, as well as our county commissioners, to consider delaying the reassessment of all the properties in the county. As we've heard here, at the beginning of our presentation, Commissioner Willen asked us to focus on solutions, not necessarily the, you know, to gripe about the problems that have been thrust upon us. With municipalities that we've heard about having 30 to 50% of their homes not being able to be valued, what is the impact that's going to have on us from a tax revenue standpoint? Again, we can't, 10% of the housing population is in the floodplain. If we can't value 10%, how does the reassessment, which as my understanding, is to make sure that taxes are fairly distributed, not raise taxes? How can we fairly distribute taxes if we can't value property, properties appropriately? It speaks to the problems that Todd Arthur, that Justin Reese, that Jim McLean have all brought up about valuations. I think it's something that the commission, as well as our commissioners, should strongly consider. And of course, whatever pressure from a county standpoint we can place on Harrisburg and on a national level, I think we need to do that. So thank you for the time, thank you for this forum here this evening.
Thank you, Jerry. Next would be Michael Kishara.
Okay, Commissioner, good evening. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time here. Basically, I'm, my name is Michael Kishara Jr. I'm the president of the Borough Council of DuBoystown. I live in DuBoystown at 2822 Euclid Avenue. I'm also a business owner with a business in South Williamsport. Most of my concerns have been addressed tonight, but still not, I, I, I didn't get a warm fuzzy yet. Basically, in my opinion, this bigot waters was a 100,000-foot proposal. For those of us down here on the ground and the grassroots, we are now trying to decipher what to do about it. It's obvious, here we sit, here we're going through it. Some of my concerns are the cost to mitigation. I know, speaking only for DuBoystown, those costs are, are out of reach. When I apply that to county, I would have to agree with Mr. Hodrick, that there are certain levels now that have to be taken on a larger scale. Little DuBoystown, Jersey Shore, Hughesville, I, I have to believe they're experiencing the same concerns. As far as the reassessment goes, I'm in full grants, that that cannot be done at a proper level with this posed in front of us. This is a new cog in this that has to be addressed first. My, the insurance rates, they're, they're directly gonna be affected, in my opinion. And please note that I have nothing in writing, I'm taking notes, so I have nothing to present to you. The value of the house and the resale of the house is going to be an issue. I have residents in our borough that have worked all their life, and what they have now in their life is their property, retirement on a very, very strict budget. This is causing a lot of problems. This, in my opinion, is gonna force a lot of our senior, DuBoystown is primarily senior residents, and those of us that are approaching, senior, of course not me, but they're approaching that level, are very concerned. If, how are they going to afford an upfront fee of what has been posed here? Even tonight, I'm hearing from $1,000 to $40,000. Unbelievable. I believe there are other options. I know that Jersey Shore had one time a levy was brought into play, shot down. They'd rather you meant do mitigation. Well, Mr. Maribito brought an interesting point up. Again, proposals, hypothetical, that's for real. The rest of it is not, it's just options. I'm very concerned about the 60% of us that are not in the floodplain, which again, Mr. Hodrick addressed, and I have to agree, someone's gotta cover that offset. When these houses, I'm gonna use a 60/40 ratio here, 40% are in the floodplain and their properties get valued at, and I'm gonna say nothing right now, somebody's gotta pick that up. Therefore, now I look at the boroughs and the townships. We have to realign our entire budgets to be able to keep going at where we are. I know in DuBoystown, we have already taken steps to cut down, we've cut away the fat to keep from raising taxes. This is going to have to have, force us to restructure. Again, my concerns are, as I'm telling you, I know I'm speaking stuff we've already heard. I didn't realize I was gonna be speaking, but when they said, tell us your concerns, the concerns I see are universal. What I don't like as universal is the federal government and this act right here, bigot waters, being universal in their thinking and not getting down and being gritted out and look at the regions and how it's affecting each region. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Dan McClellan.
Hello, folks. My name's Dan McClellan. I'm a resident of the Jersey Shore Borough Downtown Jersey Shore Flood Zone, also chairman of the Jersey Shore Planning Commission. I, I think that there's still been a large mark that's been missed here, and I don't know if nobody wants to say it. Everything we've seen tonight has been what it, what we have to do to live with this. What it boils down to is we gotta figure out what we gotta do to stop this, repeal this, whatever it takes. Mr. Maribito talking about mitigation, that's ludicrous. What are we gonna do? Jack up all of downtown Jersey Shore? I mean, that would cost untold millions of dollars. We, we, I, I was in on looking into putting a dike around Jersey Shore. Flatten- Flat, no. It would cost thirty to sixty million dollars. They said the investment doesn't, the, the, you know, what it saves doesn't, doesn't warrant the cost. So they've just told us downtown Jersey Shore is a loss. Don't worry about it. The, the, the largest problem here lies in a typical government program, FEMA, a typical government program, giving away money to people that don't have insurance, that is covered by people that have been forced to have insurance. Does anybody get, does anybody know any figures about how many people in Katrina and Sandy? I feel terrible for those people, but if they didn't have flood insurance, or they didn't have hurricane insurance, or whatever it is you're allowed to get on the coast, then they shouldn't be given a money, especially when it's being paid for by the people that they're forcing to pay. I pay eight hundred dollars a year flood insurance now, and I've always thought that was ludicrous in itself. My homeowner's insurance is only four hundred dollars. It's less than four hundred dollars. If my house burned to the ground, I'd get a hundred and twenty thousand dollar check for my house and sixty for my belongings. If my house is in a flood, if I have a flood in my house, I have a five thousand dollar deductible. I would have my carpet ruined and they'd say, clean your furnace. Oh, you have a five thousand dollar deductible. You get nothing. There was only three thousand dollars of damage. I have a five thousand dollar deductible to be able to afford the eight hundred dollars, but that I've always thought was ridiculous. Now they're going, luckily, I got in just under it. Here's another prong of this problem with this whole thing. I can probably get out of mine. I owe, I, I actually only have a home equity line of credit. I can rearrange a few things to my business in Rocktown and get, get rid of my flood insurance completely. Now, instead of a guy that was willing to pay eight hundred dollars a year, they're going to have a guy that pays zero, and I'm going to be the first guy in line standing in FEMA saying, I want my free money if my house floods. Because I gave it to everybody else in Katrina, I gave it to everybody else in Sandy, to a whole bunch of people that probably didn't pay a dime of flood insurance. All right? Some of those houses have been rebuilt two and three and four times because the owners just laughed their butts off and said, hey, rebuild her for free again, boys, because my house, I, all I got to do is stand in line at FEMA and get the free money from the government. So what it boils down to is they're going to, I heard another lady here, I think she left, I think she was with a bank or something, she was already talking about how many people have come to her and said, what can we do? What do I got to do to get out of my homeowner? Get a, I only owe a little bit of money, whatever, I got to get out of this flood insurance. So it's going to take the program that's already broken and make it even more broken. We, we need to talk here, folks. Mr. Maravito, Tony Cuscheria, Jeff Beal, you're missing the point. This has to be stopped. We can't, there's no sense talking about mitigation and how to live with it. Fran McDrunkin talking about what it takes to, yeah, maybe we can do this to a few houses along Muncie Creek or a few houses up like Coming Creek. You can't do that to all the downtown Jersey Shore. So, folks, we need to get together, get to your congressmen, senators, state House Representatives, whatever it takes. The Port Novas, forty thousand dollars a year, it's a common wall building, it's a block long. What are they going to do? Jack the whole thing up? It's impossible. Mitigation is impossible. So we need to get to the real root of the problem and repeal the law.
Next is Mr. Al Seaver.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Al Seaver. I live in Loyalsock Township, but I do own a property in the floodway in Pine Township. I used to work with D and P. I was the Soza Waterways Chief for thirty some years. I regulated all activities in the floodway, working with local municipalities under flood plain ordinance. Quite truthfully, most municipalities do not enforce their ordinance. I can show you hundreds of places that flooded that shouldn't have flooded because they don't, they're not raised above the hundred year flood elevation. In my opinion, this law is probably the first time, I'm sixty-six years old, it's the first time I've ever seen the federal government use some common sense. They've got to do something about the flood mess. This is not just money. These people are, there's people dying in these floods. I've been having eighteen FEMA floods doing damage survey reports. The system is not working. One thing I think could be done to make things better is to give FEMA the right to do eminent domain. You go out in these places six, seven times, they flooded six, seven times, and they collect their money, FEMA has no right to tell them, you have to move. They should be given that authority.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver.
My name's Dave Springman, live in Loyalsock Township. I live out Pogo Farmer Road. I've lived there for fifty years, and I'd like to share an experience firsthand what has happened. A neighbor of forty some years, his wife passed away, he went into a nursing home. The young couple were looking to buy it, come over. He had lived in the area for many years, and he come over one night to my uncle, and he said to him, he said, you know that your house is in the flood zone? We said, what are you talking about? He was going to get a loan through one of the local banks. Everything was fine until the end, which they said, you're in the flood zone, okay? I called Loyalsock Township, I know Jeff Ralph, I said, Jeff, what's this about? He said, I don't know. You'll have to talk to the zoning officer. I called Garth the next day and talked to him, and he said, well, we're in the process of doing this and that. And I said, I was never made aware that I was in the flood zone. And he said, we're in the process of building it, as far as a list to notify those people. I then called Dottie White and said, Dottie, tax collector, why am I paying taxes on this if I'm considered to be in the flood zone? She said, I don't set the assessment. She said, you'll have to contact them. And I contacted that office, and when I spoke to the lady there, she said, next June and July, we're doing a reassessment. At that time, if you object to it, come in and you can talk to us about it. And I said, okay. And I said, doesn't your records cross-reference with the properties that now would fall into the flood zone area? She said, no. And I said, doesn't that seem kind of stupid? And she said, that's just the way it goes, okay? I received an assessment paper last week, said to fill it out and send it in. Again, I called and I said, how are you going to know I'm in the flood zone if your records are not cross-referencing? She said, we would consider it at that time. I said, okay, that doesn't make a lot of sense. The neighbor is in his eighties, he had a surveyor come out, they're in the process of getting the elevation certificate. He really doesn't understand what's going on. And the thing that I found most alarming is, this is not filled tonight because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for these people looking behind this house. And when I talked to my neighbors, they all thought I was nuts too. What are you talking about? Fifty years of living here, a little stream which flows on down through and goes into Mill Creek. And when I talked to Garth at the township, the codes, I just questioned, and I said, hmm, that stream flows behind Loyalsock Fire Company. Is Loyalsock Fire Company in? He looked up on the map and he said, yes, they are. So I'm assuming that would mean St. Anne's, et cetera, et cetera, that those would fall in, but the different organizations are not, they have, you know what I mean? They're not mixed together. They do not know what the other one is doing. They don't know what's going on, and I think that's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Springman. Next, Ray Thompson. The Henry Township. Okay. How about Gene Wool? John Bosom? And Derek Harland? Leslie Hole? Okay, that's all that we had listed that wanted to speak. Is there anybody here that didn't put down they wanted to speak and like an opportunity to have? Yes, sir. Your name and where you're from, please.
My name's Paul Garrett. I'm from Jersey Shore. I just got elected to the Borough Council. I haven't been sworn in yet, I won't be until January, but I can see problems that I'm going to have to face with the borough and what's going to be happening with the flood insurance. Myself, I live in the first ward. I'm at ground zero. My house faces the river, so I know I'll never be able to sell my home. And that's, that really is disturbing because I love it, but this is really hurting a lot of people. I don't think, I don't think the federal government understands that we're not millionaires. You know, we don't own property on the beach that costs five, six million dollars, and then, oh, yeah, okay, I have flood insurance, well, just replace it. No, what's going to happen, I, there's not really any choice. What's going to happen is, like everybody said, even the Commission, you're going to have everybody that can't pay for these flood insurance, which my next door neighbor told me already. She's a mother, single mother, she has a big, huge home. Mine's big, was built in eighteen sixty-five, hers was built in the eighteen hundreds. She said she's going to walk away from it. And that's what the people in Jersey Shore are going to do because they can't afford it. What you're looking at, and the revitalization people, I've been working with Denny, was helping to revitalize Jersey Shore. Even the Port Novas, I was, you know, amazed at what they've been doing with Jersey Shore, with Main Street. But what's going to happen? People are going to walk out, you're going to get slum boards to come in and buy the properties, and it's not going to be river revitalization, it's going to be slumbered ghettos. And that's it. And then, and the tax base, that's gone, because, you know, my home right now is worth two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But if you plan on, you know, with this flood insurance and nobody wanting to buy it, it's going to happen the same thing. I'm going to have a twenty thousand dollar home and I can't do anything with it. So it has to be repealed. It can't, this cannot go on. The people in Jersey Shore, like I said, river towns are not going to be river towns anymore. They're just going to be ghettos. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is Jeff Walton. I live in the borough of Muncie, and I am someone that has already been surprised with this. I received a call from my insurance company the first week of October stating that they wanted to go over policy changes. It, it was kind of gibberish to me, I didn't know what they were talking about, so, and they had left the message. They were referring to a mailing that they had recently sent out, which I hadn't gotten yet. Over the course of next day or two, I got this mailing and mistakenly threw it on the bill pile and didn't think about it for about two weeks. I had mentioned to my wife, at that time, did you call the insurance company yet? She said, no. So I got the mail out, and she called them. And they were going over the, the fact that I had to have an elevation survey. At that time, I started getting very angry, and I told my wife to hang up because it sounded like it was ridiculous nonsense. Mind you, we closed on this home December seventh of two thousand twelve, five months after this legislation was signed. Nowhere were we told anything about this legislation. It was probably about the third week in October, I started looking for a survey. Found one. Five hundred dollars was the cheapest I could find, which I wasn't in agreeance to this, but I paid it. I wanted to go through the motions to see what the outcome would be. I had the survey done. I believe I submitted it toward the end of October. Our, our, and flood insurance is escrow, so I never paid attention to when the start and end date of our policy was. In the midst of all this, I found out that my end date was November thirtieth. I had submitted the survey, and within the, the following two weeks, I was called repeatedly by my insurance company stating I had to get better pictures of my home. I had to measure my foundation. Ultimately, I was given a call, given a call on December second, and my insurance, insurance premium is going from five hundred and ninety-two dollars a year to one of two options that I have to choose and pay in full by December thirtieth, or I begin to lose my house. The first option, both being a one thousand dollar deductible, on fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars with coverage, I can pay nine thousand six hundred and nine, nine thousand sixty-nine dollars, or with the same deductible covering sixty thousand eight hundred dollars, I can pay eight thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now, some people might be in the situation to maybe scrounge up and pay the balance of their home off. I bought this house December seventh of two thousand twelve.
Hi. My name's Josh Eli. I just have a very similar situation, not nearly as steep as that, but I just bought my house November thirtieth of two thousand twelve in Jersey Shore, right next to Dan McClellan, actually. And I'm looking at right now, well, we signed for a thousand a year, my new wife and I, and we're looking at twenty-seven hundred a year now, and then twenty percent plus, you know, every additional year for five years. So, you know, that's pretty ridiculous, pretty high, pretty much impossible to, to deal with. So we are just simply looking at forced place, and nobody can tell me what forced place is going to run. I've been contacting, well, PHFA, at least every week, yesterday and today again, they still can't give me any kind of idea what forced place is going to be anywhere near. They gave me the name of the company that's in charge of forced place, Seattle, anybody help me out, Seattle, Seattle something, and they're in charge of, of forced place rates, but they still don't have a clue. So I'm just, I'm not going to pay it. I'm not going to get the elevation certificate. I'm not going to even attempt to move forward on this because it's, it's asinine, it's insane. So hopefully, the, you know, the penalty for forced place isn't going to jack it up to four thousand instead, but what other option do I have than to, to bank on that? Does anybody have a clue what forced place is looking at right now?
More.
More?
Almost double.
Oh, that's just fantastic. So, yeah, we have a hundred and five thousand dollar homes that we are five thousand dollars in on paying, are a starter home, you know? I'm a teacher, she's a teacher, we moved into the area, we've been here three years. We were in a rental before this. I, you know, I'm afraid to think that we might have made the biggest mistakes of our young lives this early on. So, you know, we got to repeal this. There is nothing else that my young family can do, or, or any other number of us. So, I mean, whatever it takes, I'll write letters, I'll, you know, do whatever I can, but it's, it's got to come from some people with some position and power. Thank you.
All right.
I do have thirty more seconds, please. Two days ago, I sent an email to WNEP, to their investigative reporter, basically questioning why, why on their end has this not been publicized? Fifteen minutes before I walked out of my door today to come here, I get a call from David Bowman with WNEP. He wanted me to give him an answer immediately whether he could interview me. He was getting in his car, interviewing me at my home, and then coming here with me. I finally agreed to have him interview me. I was getting around, he called five minutes later and said, another deal came in, but he's very interested in interviewing me, and he said, he asked me that when I come here, if I can get email addresses from everyone here that's interested to talk with him and get this out there, get this cry out there in the public for people to see, he would, he would really appreciate it. he would, he would really appreciate it.
Gentlemen in the back.
My name's Brian Pepperman, I live in Lewis Township, along the Cumming Creek. My great uncle and aunt owned this property from the early nineteen hundreds. My uncle got cancer, passed away as his house got flooded during Sandy. Uh, my great aunt, eighty years old, dealing with the passing of her husband, the flood, we put the house back together, she decided she couldn't live there anymore. From the time I was born, every Labor Day weekend, we had family reunions at this property. I lived in an apartment downtown, didn't want to see it leave the family. I decided at that time, I'm going to buy the property from my aunt, again, in December of last year, not knowing anything about this. Um, weighed the risk of the flood, knew what the flood insurance cost, decided it was worth it. Moved into the property, a year later, same issues as everyone else's place is having. Um, I guess the irony of the situation is, I'm probably going to lose the property, got a credit score of seven seventy, probably going to lose that too, and it's not going to be the creek's fault. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I believe that we're going to keep the, uh...
Yeah, if any, if anyone would like to submit a letter or any kind of written information to us, um, please contact the Planning Commission, and we will keep that open for another week, that you can submit information to be put into the record for this hearing, if you want to provide anything in writing to us.
And if you can get neighbors and, and, uh, other people to, uh, do the same, I think that it would carry a lot of weight. Uh, I guess, at this time, I'm not going to close the hearing, because, uh, we're going to allow public comment, yeah, uh, to continue.
And I think, uh...
Yes. Uh, yeah, we're, we will adjourn for the time, and, and, Mr. Whelan, would you like to, comments?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank everyone, uh, for showing up today and offering, uh, testimony, we certainly appreciate it. Again, as I said in my opening statement, for those that weren't, perhaps not here, uh, our staff brought it to our attention a little over three months ago, we knew this was going to be an issue, there's power in numbers, and we appreciate you coming and voicing your opinion, and it's not over, you know, we're going to, we're going to do what it takes, uh, to get this thing fixed. Federal government got us into this mess, and they got to get us out of this mess. So, Commissioner Misera, I think, wants to make a comment also. But again, thank you very much for your attendance and your input, and stay tuned, because this is just the beginning. Trust me, this is just the beginning. This is, uh, it's, it's not just a Wycoming County issue, it's not just a Pennsylvania issue, it's a nationwide issue. And so my, my fellow commissioners from Louisiana are all over this, so, uh, again, thank you and stay tuned. Commissioner Misera?
Yeah. I'd like to also thank everybody for being here. Only history will tell how we, we do as, as county commissioners, but I can assure you, I am an activist, I'm behind you, you have to know that. I look at these gentlemen over here, and it makes me sick, if we think the healthcare act is bad, this is, this is, the healthcare is nothing compared to this, nothing. So, understand, looking at our representatives from our state and federal, this isn't something that we can delay. These people, these people are experiencing this now. I, I can't even imagine the anxiety he has, knowing that he has to spend ninety-five hundred dollars, okay? We need solutions quick. We, we can't wait. On a, a, a repeal of the law is fine, okay? Still, it's still, it still isn't going to, to help solve the problem. I heard on the opposite side that we do have a problem, we don't have the funds. So we have to come up with a comprehensive solution here. Banks will be included, governments will be included, everyone will be included, but as we look, and, uh, Mr. Hodrick over here talking about postponing the reassessment, he may be totally correct, okay? Uh, the commissioners in the planning department will look into that, okay? But this has to happen now.
I want to thank everybody for attending, and, uh, especially the, the extra testimony presented, and, uh, hopefully it can come to some quick resolution to this. Thank you.